Okay, stand by. And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the August 3rd, 2015 Long Meadow Select Board Meeting. We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the announcements. Does anybody have announcements? Alex? Announcements of that sort?
Yeah. Well, I just, you know, I don't know if I'll get a chance to talk about it later, but there has been a website set up for fundraising for the individual.
That'll be discussed.
Okay, yeah, great. I'd like to see that get mentioned.
Okay.
Other than that, no other announcements.
Mark?
No, I have nothing.
Marie? Stephen?
Uh, do you want, just general announcements for now?
No, the one we chatted about.
Okay, um, as I think most people are aware by now, there was a really tragic incident, accident really, on Hazardville Road last Friday in the morning. There's a construction company under contract for the town of Long Meadow doing a sewer line replacement on Hazardville Road, Martin's Construction out of Ludlow. And before they'd even really set to their work, they were still getting set up for the day, one of the employees from Martin's became trapped in the trench, which filled with water because somehow through the process, the water main had broken that was exposed. And the gentleman, David Nussumento, subsequently died at the scene. And as Tom just alluded to, there's been a GoFundMe campaign set up online. Information for that is available. I found it through Mass Live, I believe it's also on Facebook. If, for a lot of people, a lot of local people have kind of linked to that. I did send out a note to the town of Long Meadow employees. We're trying to collect donations and send one, one check to the family from the town of Long Meadow family to the Nussumento family. And the reason why we're doing that is because this, you know, it was, I mean, obviously our thoughts and prayers are with the family and, you know, we're all deeply saddened by what happened, but there's also, the tragedy really struck a chord with many town employees across different departments beyond just first responders. And we had a discussion about it today, about this afternoon, kind of a debrief with some of the people who were involved in the incident. And I know it's something that really has had a really deep impact on our team, our town of Long Meadow family. And so, because it was really well beyond just one department or a handful of employees, we decided that we wanted to, you know, symbolically make the donation from the town of Long Meadow family to the Nussumento family. So, I sent out an email about how to contribute to that. People are certainly also welcome to go online to the GoFundMe campaign. Like I said, you know, I think everyone is, for their own personal reasons, people in the town, town employees are really deeply touched by this. I know people beyond town employees are also deeply affected and saddened. And like I said, our thoughts and prayers are with the Nussumento family and the folks at Martin's Construction. You know, they are a contractor, not town employees, but they're here all summer. The Martin's has worked in town before. The police officers who do the details get to know them quite well. A lot of our DPW personnel who assist in oversight of the project get to know the guys pretty well. And so, this really has struck a deep chord with us. And I just, you know, we're still really dealing with the emotion of it all beyond the, you know, work that now has to be addressed and how, you know, how do we plan to give, you know, finish the work on Hazardville Road so the people can have their street back and, you know, debrief from the emergency response. We don't get incidents like that and calls like that very often, thank God. But, you know, a lot of resources were brought in and a lot of agencies were, came to the scene to assist that we haven't worked with before. And so, it's, you know, how did we do? What did we learn in going through that operational process, you know, on top of, you know, really coping with what happened? So, you know, people have been, people have reached out to us in addition to the family and expressed their support and gratitude, and we are grateful for that. I, you know, the one thing I'll say is even though I think all of us wish that it hadn't, it would not have happened, we did see the best in our employees and how they responded. And I just want people at home to know that, you know, the town of Long Meadow departments that served them every day really stepped up in a time of crisis and served the folks that were there on scene, but also the entire community very well. I mean, the police and fire obviously did yeoman's work during this, during the incident, but the DPW personnel stayed on Hazardville Road all day and later to make sure that the sewer work was repaired as well as the water main so the folks on Hazardville Road could get water back on that day. And, you know, they truly should be commended for being able to do all of that in very difficult circumstances.
Okay, thanks Stephen. And I sent an email to Stephen on behalf of the board this week expressing not exactly everything you said, but sincerest thanks for the professionalism shown by all on this event. This was, this was an amazing thing that took place and the coordination always instantaneous. And I think it was a job well done by the press and everything, the impacts on. Thank you Stephen. Any other comments?
I mean, I guess I would echo what was said. And, you know, one of the things that you passed on, Richard, was that, as I understand it, somebody actually kind of risked their own life and safety to try to save this man. And to me, you know, that, that really is affirming that some of the, sometimes the worst things, you know, bring out the best things, you know, in us. You know, I also, you know, I also understand that OSHA is looking at this, which I think is good. You know, we'll have an outside look at this and, you know, if there's something that needs to be improved, either at the contractor end or how we structure our contracts or how the town does its work, you know, that will provide us an opportunity to do that. I think that's important. But other than that, you know, it's just heartbreaking when something like this happens to somebody who's got so much life in front of them.
Any other comments? Resident comments? See no resident, oh Jim?
Here Russell, I'm gonna wait till they're joined, Long Meadow, Mass. My late wife and I moved into Long Meadow on October 30th, 1964. We built our first house and my only house here in Long Meadow, and I reside there now for over 51 years. I'm here tonight for one main reason, and that is to compliment our town manager, Stephen Crane, members of Long Meadow's finest, both the police department and fire department, and any other persons who were involved in the planning of a very, very special honoring of three dedicated employees for the town of Long Meadow. It was just phenomenal. Over 200 guests were present. I saw retired police chiefs from Long Meadow. I saw retired police, active police chiefs from other departments. I saw representatives of the gold badge membership of the Western Mass Police Chiefs Association. I saw all kinds of dignitaries on the police end, on the fire department end, retired fire chiefs from around the area attended. International representation was there. The two newly appointed fire chief and police chief were present. As I stood there with my son who came in later, I marveled at the length of time that three dedicated individuals devoted to the town of Long Meadow to protect the town in case of fire on the police end event of a police problem. And the DPW chief who toiled on their difficult situations. The food was excellent. The comradeship was great. It was a special night, and I couldn't have been prouder of those people who arranged for this special function. And I'm gonna lay the blame right on you, Stephen Crane, because you had to be the catalyst. And I don't think there was one person in that room that didn't have a phenomenal time, had an opportunity to participate, shake the person's hands, see the proclamations from both the House and the Senate, and everything else that went on. So, I thank you, Stephen. I thank the members of the police department, fire department that participated, and any other people. I was very proud to be a resident of Long Meadow that night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Jim. Is there any other resident comments? Select Board comments? Nope? No Select Board comments? Okay. Town manager report?
I know the, you know, with the Purple Heart folks.
You wanna skip and go next?
Uh, I can either be brief or if you want them and then.
Let's go, I was gonna push it up anyway. Let's go ahead with the, Paul, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go with the, the Purple Heart plaque presentation now.
Mr. Maury Nollet came over and said, "Make sure you push the thing up."
It was.
Do fine constituent service.
It was going to be pretty quick.
We have a good amount of them, so.
Okay.
Introduce Brian Nollet, the commander of Western Mass Military Order of Purple Hearts. He can't be doing it for you.
And the microphones are hot, so if you could, if you want to make something that goes out on the air.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Phil, you want to go?
I guess I'm gonna.
All of them are people over here.
Yes, certainly.
Is this, is this good?
We want to thank you very much for having us tonight. We've got our A-Team on board for this one tonight. And Long Meadow is a very special community to, to a lot of us. Many of us grew up in Springfield. We have a couple of Long Meadow residents right here, former, where'd you go to high school? Long Meadow High? Commerce, okay. I guess she loved before, she loved things before things got bad here, I guess. So, uh, this is a great community. Your veteran service officer, Paul Seifer, and I go back about 25 years as members of the 104th Infantry Regiment, and we served together in Bosnia. And I know when he got the job over here, I knew the veterans of Long Meadow would be in very good hands with Paul. And the first thing he did was contact me about this project that we had for Purple Heart Communities and throughout the nation. Over 750 communities have become Purple Heart cities and towns and about, I think, 70 plus in Massachusetts. And quite a few in Western Massachusetts. So, really honored to be here tonight. If you will, I'll read the proclamation that, I know you're familiar with it, but, "The town of Long Meadow proclaims Purple Heart Town. Whereas the town of Long Meadow, whereas the people of town of Long Meadow have a great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all men and women who have subtly served their country and this community and the armed forces for the good of all. And whereas, contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Long Meadow who serve in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital to maintain the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving the armed forces and have been possibly awarded the Purple Heart Medal for their ultimate sacrifice. And whereas, citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice for being wounded in action while engaged in combat. And whereas, the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was created as the badge of military merit on August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington. Initially, it was made of purple cloth shaped as a heart with the word merit sewn upon it. Whereas, the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the medal, the Purple Heart Medal. And whereas, August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the Long Meadow Select Board on behalf of the town of Long Meadow, go on record hereby proclaim Long Meadow, Massachusetts a Purple Heart Town honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform that were wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Also be it proclaimed, we the town of Long Meadow will recognize August 7th annually as Purple Heart Day and urge the people of, people and organizations of Long Meadow to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition for our Purple Heart recipients." And we really touched that, the Select Board passed that tonight. I just want to tell you a little bit about our membership and our chapter. We have about 50 Purple Heart recipients here in Western Massachusetts in our chapter alone. And I'm joined tonight by our most senior member, Phil Gerard, who was wounded on January 16th, 1944, liberating the Philippines. He was wounded about a month later while recovering in the hospital, the first wound by Japanese artillery in February of 1944. We're also joined by Steve Sawyer, not our most senior member, but I think our most senior Vietnam veteran, who was wounded in 1966 while on patrol in Vietnam. And he, he returned to Vietnam in 1970 for a second tour of duty. We're also joined by Richard Pete.
Where's Richard?
Richard's right there. Richard served in the United States Army Special Forces in Vietnam on numerous occasions. First time in 1965, his first tour of duty in Vietnam. And he was wounded again on additional tour of duty in 1970. Also, we're joined by John Hurley.
Where's John?
Right here.
John's right here. John's a United States Marine. He was in, he was a squad's machine gunner, which I, that is a very special role, I know. And he carried the M60 machine gun through the jungles of Vietnam until he was wounded also in 1970.
Did I leave anybody out in our group?
I'm also joined by Eric Segundo. He's the junior vice commander of the state, VFW State of Massachusetts. He's an Iraq War veteran. And we're joined by the associate members, wives, family members, et cetera, who support their loved ones. And on behalf of the Military Order of Purple Heart Department of Massachusetts, we'd like to offer this certificate of acknowledgement presented to the town of Long Meadow. Being designated as the town of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be known as a Purple Heart Community honoring all those who made the ultimate sacrifice and shed their blood defending our country in all wars from Long Meadow, Massachusetts, and honoring August 7th as Purple Heart Appreciation Day. All gave some, some gave all, signed, Department Commander Leo David Agnew. And I'd like to present this to you tonight in appreciation of voting.
We welcome anybody in this, come along.
Who's put down the money out?
Sir. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Chris, can you give a good wine shot?
Yep. You guys wanna come on in? Yeah, come on in.
And you're all shorter anyway.
I don't want to ask anybody to take any, but I'll go behind you, come on in. Can we tighten it up at all? How we doing? We getting there?
Getting there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much for having us. We appreciate it. Oh yeah, we have something for you.
We have something?
I'm sorry, I almost forgot. We have something for you guys too. Thank you so much. Oh, thank you, man. Thank you again, Tom.
Thanks.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for your support.
I'd like to also thank our veteran service officer for setting this up and making this happen in our community. Paul did a wonderful job on this. Let's see, Paul, do you want to go right into the wounded warrior?
Yep.
Okay. We'll give Paul a minute or clearing the room and he'll be able to get back up to the mic.
Well, let me, I'll talk quick. Mention what this is we're about to do. This is, this is a check from what we raised in funds from the, this past November's Wounded Warrior 5K run that we've been doing every year. It's for $9,000. All the departments came together, hundreds of volunteers, hundreds of supporters, and made this happen and it's $9,000 towards the Wounded Warrior Project. I don't know how to put it into better words than that, but that's quite a proud achievement, I think, on behalf of the town of Long Meadow. So, the Wounded Warrior Project themselves was unable to be present for the presentation, but we were able to get an alumni to come and accept a check under behalf and we'll mail it to them.
Okay. And this, this year alumni person.
This is Harold Skelton.
Go ahead and sit down, Phil.
He's a Air Force veteran of the Iraq War and I'm just gonna basically ceremonially present it to him. And if anyone wants to take any pictures of that, that'd be nice.
It's $9,000?
A little bit more awkward. Okay, yes, yes. Slightly awkward, but the Wounded Warrior Project does not do check presentations, so I got the okay from them to have an alumni do it and that's what we're doing just so we can send the check on its way and let it get to the good work that they do. And I just want to thank Harold for coming out and accepting it on their behalf and for, for being a veteran of Iraq and.
Yeah, and just on behalf of the Wounded Warrior, we'd like to thank you all for the community help, support and all that. It means a lot to us. This, this money goes towards a lot of great things for us, like special trips or whatever. So, it's always like welcoming when we get great people like you guys helping us out.
Okay, and Paul, I'd like to thank you not only for that, but I was saying it for the Purple Heart thing. I know you put a lot of work behind that to get our community.
Welcome.
Certified. And we appreciate your efforts as a veteran service officer and all that you do for the veterans. Do you have monthly meetings? So, you do a lot of outreach and?
I have, I have a ton of support. Some of them are actually here right now.
Right.
Jerry Nollet, Bill Maury. Stephen Kennedy's not here, but he's always a huge help. Got Richard and Dave.
Richard and Dave.
You like being called Clark, don't you? I'm sorry. And I've got a ton of support, so my job's made very easy. And I just want to thank all the veterans in the town.
Okay, and we appreciate, appreciate what you put into it. It's a very active program. There's no doubt about our veterans circle. It's a very active program in our community. Any other, yeah?
You know, I was just gonna say, I've run this race the last two years. So, I come at this from the running angle and I've been running quite a while. And I can tell you, this was a tremendous race last year and the year before. I've run a lot of races in Western Massachusetts. I think we had like 700 people the first year. I think it was somewhere in that neighborhood the second year. And I'm not aware of another race in Western Mass that comes close to it. Maybe, I think there's one in Northampton that's pretty big. But it's, it's really a testament, I think, to the cause. You know, you'd say Wounded Warrior and people show up and, you know, support this cause. So, and, and the way the town has put it on has really been a credit to everybody involved. So, thank you.
Any other comments, Marie?
I want to thank you for your service and coming in tonight to accept the check because this has been several years, but Paul, you coming in, working with the veterans, it's, it's been an amazing program. And not only that, the contributions to Wounded Warrior, but we're now celebrating Veterans Day as a town, and I think that's really wonderful. And now that you have us a Purple Heart Town, I'm very proud of your work you're doing. Thank you so much. And for all the veterans, because it shows the work, the veterans coming together and you leading them. So, thank you, it's wonderful.
Thank you, gentlemen. Stephen, town manager report?
You're in our, our, at Brett.
Obviously, the town manager report that I intended to submit was somewhat impacted by my, I was not in the office Friday morning, I was out in the field. So, I apologize for that and thank you for your understanding. Just a quick anecdote to Alex's point. The first year we did it, when we lined up the race company, they brought 300 numbers. And they said, they gave us the 300 numbers and we had, we had to order more and they had to get more printed because they said they'd never get more than 300 runners to show up for a race in this region. And that was, we were like, wow. And then when the, it went from 125 to over 500 within a matter of days. And it was only a week and a half before the event. So, we were much better prepared this year than we were the first year or this, this past November, but it is a great event. It does take a lot of hands, including members of the board who have volunteered as well as town departments and town employees who volunteer their time. And we are in the planning stages of this year's event as well. So, we did talk briefly before the meeting was called to order about the facilitator. I'll be sending out a, we are going to engage Bernard Lynch. We did, I did, the terms, the letter of engagement, if you will, is in the packet. If there's any issues with that, certainly let me know. Otherwise, we will proceed. And then I'll be sending out a scheduling poll after, after discussing available dates with Bernie, and we'll get that nailed down. Just a quick update on the streetlight issue. I have had, been going back and forth a little bit with our consultant, George Woodbury. He's still not heard back from EverSource's, his contact there that we had discussed, I believe, in executive session and wanted, and he, and when I said, you know, it's time to figure out what we're gonna do next, he did ask for a little more time to reach back out. I'll be honest with you, there is some media interest in this situation. I have had calls from the media. And one of my next steps is to sit down with them and talk about what we believe to be the situation with EverSource and how we believe that the town has been treated through the process. But he had, like I said, George had asked for a little more time before doing that, but, you know, I think by the end of the week, we'll make a decision to certainly have that discussion so the public is more broadly aware of the, of the issues that we're having. And then his recommendation, I think, will be to prepare some kind of filing for the Department of Public Utilities to move forward. Unfortunately, I really wish it was, I really wish we were getting better cooperation from the utility, but, you know, we're just, it's not happening.
So, we shouldn't have any problem bringing that to some type of decision for the next meeting?
I don't know about the next meeting, but I need to figure out with George what type of filing, what the timeline would be, what the cost to doing that would be. I think he had suggested in our executive session that there was some cost to preparing and filing and going through the process. So, I think the decision will be, do we wanna, do we wanna go that way or? And I'll have to check his schedule because I'd want him to be a part of the conversation.
But I was saying, I anticipate that you'll have enough information for the board to possibly set a direction at the end, at our next meeting then? On how we want to move?
Yeah, I would say so, yeah.
Okay. Yes, Marie?
I think Alex had wanted something too, but.
Well, on that point, because you were mentioning the media, are there other towns that you're aware of that have challenged EverSource on this issue? I mean.
On this particular issue.
I know we've reviewed this before. I'm just wondering if there's something new going on.
No.
Stephen, there are other towns who had expressed interest a couple of years ago. I don't know if they've actually continued to have interest or not, but there were others at the time.
Per our last discussion about this, I did reach out to a couple of surrounding communities who we, who, you know, George Woodbury identified. who we, who, you know, George at Woodbury identified were similar, could be similarly impacted. They both, they both expressed interest in, you know, keeping track of what we're doing, and I think we'll get to that point, and that's why I believe the media typically, you know, do business that way, but that's why I think there is media interest in this, because I think it's a regional issue for more than just one town. So, I do, I do think if we do decide to go to the DPU, and that's why I think we're gonna, it'll, it'll take a little time to decide what our strategy's gonna be, because it could be a, a multilateral approach to doing this.
Richard?
Hmm?
One of the things I want us to decide and talk about as a board too, which you'll have to bring information to us, is when there, if there comes a time that we have to uncouple the Green Communities grant from this process, because I know we have until the third week in October to reapply, which means we might need to spend to reapply, and so I would say we probably have some sort of timeline, whether it's beginning of September, you would know better, or what your recommendations would be for that, so I would sort of look towards you to what you recommend, if we uncouple, and if so, where would we spend the money?
Yeah, we, I think we'll have to talk to the Green Communities Office, it'd be a pretty fundamental shift, we'd have to do a substantive contract amendment if we're gonna change our project. So, it's not, we, the town can't just say, we're gonna, we're not spending it here, we're gonna spend it over here, we have to go through the process with the state, but we, you're right, I mean, at some point in time, at some point in time soon, we're going to fish or cut bait on the streetlight issue and decide how we're gonna proceed.
And I listed that as next agenda, because I knew that Stephen and I had talked about that, that we need to, just like he said, fish or cut bait, or cut bait or fish, whichever way you wanna go. Anybody else? Anything else, Stephen?
Yeah, a couple more items. You all received a notice, there will be a, a multi-town select board meeting, it'll be a Wilbraham Select Board meeting, that the towns that are involved in the five-town regional emergency communication center, the REC, have been invited to on September 10th. We have communicated with this at the board level, but just let the folks at home know that we have a conversation still ongoing. I believe one town, Ludlow, has voted to take the next step, and of course, the next step is to adopt the provisions of the Act, which allows the town to then apply for the next round of grants, so there's no cost to the town to go to the next step. Ludlow's voted to do that, Handon is, I believe, having that vote tonight, and then I think most towns will probably hold off until that meeting on the 10th, and the Corel Group, representatives of the Corel Group will be there for the shared meeting, we can talk about it as a group. I should be receiving the report from J C J Architects on the assessment of the two middle schools, the walkthrough that occurred in July, and I believe they were, from what I understand, they were stem to stern on the two schools, over two hours in each location, boilers, roofs, you know, they really tried to check all corners, and I, last I had heard, they were going to be submitting a report in early August, so I would expect to get that any day. Similarly, we're supposed to be receiving a scope of work from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on our long-range plan update.
The walkthrough, what company was doing that?
J C J Architects. They had done the townwide facilities study a few years back, and so we retained them because they had done the original round of facilities assessment.
How, are you going to, you coming?
Well, I just a question about, are they equipped to handle safety issues? Because I know that was a concern for some people, especially Glenn Brook, with the layout of the school, in terms of, you know, the way we look at safety today is a lot different than we looked at safety in the 70s, and would these architects address any of those issues, or have any suggestions, or no?
No, I, I think that the scope is really what condition the building's in, and what capital needs are gonna be present in this, I mean, you know, the discussion of should the buildings be fundamentally reconfigured is a, is a much different discussion, that would really be, you know, really an SOI, I mean, it would be a much larger project. So, right now, it's just, when's the roof gonna need to be replaced, you know, there, we, we've talked a lot about the capital projects, but we haven't really gone in and taken the in-depth look at the condition of it in a, in a little, in a fair amount of time, so we wanted to go back and do that. A lot of questions got raised during the SOI discussion about, well, what's wrong with the buildings, what needs to be done, and we decided we want to try and answer those questions. You know, they're all, it's still a guess. You know, an architect can say, an architect or an engineer can look at your roof and say, it looks great, and then it can start leaking the next day. So, there's some level of uncertainty, but we feel, at least going through and taking the pictures and having the discussions and really doing some kind of analysis is, will help inform the answers to the questions that were raised. So, if the SOI process is renewed by the school committee, we can have this information at our disposal.
Sure, because I imagine we'll be hearing from the school committee fairly soon about this project again, and it would be nice to have this report. When will this report be available?
I, I, like I said, they said early August.
Okay, early August, great. Thank you.
I expect it any time.
Okay, this month.
Go ahead, Mark.
Stephen, I, I seem to recall that at one point, there was a request, at least by a couple of us, to say, no, what, not only what, what's the condition, but some cost estimates for making different series of improvements, is that also anticipated to be in this?
I think there'll be kind of order of magnitude costs, you know, again, yeah, I mean, it's, yes.
Plus or minus?
Plus or minus, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
What's your, what's your plan for delivery on this, Stephen, and when you get the report? Are you gonna have a group meeting and bring schools in, or, I mean, you thought about that yet?
Well, I think, you know, we're due for a joint meeting with the schools. Certainly, we have a new IT director. I think I'd, I would, I would request that the school committee and the superintendent kind of present, you know, their, their chosen IT director and the process they went through. I would also think that, you know, we want to kind of have a preliminary budget kickoff discussion like we have in the past. You know, I don't think it needs to be, you know, in August, I mean, maybe we have some time to digest the report, but certainly September would be appropriate to kind of begin that discussion, so there, there are a few items that the school and the school committee and select board could address, so it could be more than just a single-issue agenda. So, my recommendation would be, let's present it, present the report to the joint board committee meeting at some point in time when we have that joint meeting.
Okay, so September, Mary?
Is it possible, though, to, when you receive the report, for us to have it before the meeting, so we can...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it, hide it.
It takes a while to get through.
No, I, well, I mean, of course, once we get, once we get the report, we will, I mean, happily share their information and send it out, but I think to have a, you know, a discussion about it, you know, it's probably, for the sake of, I don't wanna say transparency, but for the sake of collective understanding and getting on the same page, it would be better to do it in a joint meeting. It's my recommendation, but the board can obviously...
Do you want, do you wanna do a doodle poll on that, or would you like me to do it? I mean, you're going across the board.
Well, I guess what I'd suggest is, maybe you get with the chair of the school committee and talk to her about whether or not she's, the school committee would be interested in...
Well, I know, I know, they know our group meeting's coming up, and I just wonder about the organizational point of it.
I think once we decide that we're going to do it and identify a couple of dates that work for both committees, certainly Debbie can work with Diane and George Antis to kind of do the industry of scheduling of it.
Okay, so would you figure September, mid-September, anyway?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, like I said, the information isn't all that time-sensitive, and the SOIs won't be back. I think it's, I think they do them in the early, when did they do that, February?
Yeah, it gets...
Yeah, it was in spring.
Yeah, it was in the early spring. So, we have some time, and I just, if we're gonna get together, you might as well have the budget and everything else kind of along that same time, and September may be a little early to do the budget, but we can play that by year.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
You know, I guess, I thank Jim Russell for his comments. I do agree that it was, it was a really fun event. I want to thank Twin Hills for, you know, being a great host, and really having great food, and, you know, creating a fun atmosphere for the retiree party. It was really touching for me to see how many people really wanted to express their gratitude to those three gentlemen, how many people who aren't here in the community, who came from outside, from some distance, traveled some distance to be here. For, obviously, unfortunately, we didn't get to enjoy the, the good vibrations for very long, but it doesn't take away from the evening that we had, and I do disagree with Jim about one thing, I, I do get blamed for most things pretty fairly, but on that one, you know, a lot of people, a lot of people put forth a lot of effort to make that a great event, so I want to thank the folks that did assist with that. And thank the people who came, and I, you know, sometimes with these events, you, you get kind of a dine and dash crowd, but people really stayed around and enjoyed each other's company, and that's always, it's always good to see.
Any other comments, or comments, his comments? Anything else, Stephen?
I think that's about it.
Okay.
Richard?
Yeah.
We've discussed this before, but the gates to the DPW facility continue to be open off-hours.
The gate?
Yes.
The one of the, and I, I actually, I think, last I knew was broken.
Okay, all right, well, then, that explains it. I mean, the concern is, we have a lot of equipment that's exposed, so...
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment, too. I know I had, I had voiced my concerns to you a couple of weeks ago for, couple, every once in a while, seeing employees without seat belts on, and I've seen a noticeable improvement in seat belt usage, so I, I thank the employees for buckling up. I know sometimes it's pester some going to and from, but I, it's a noticeable improvement in seat belt policy usage, okay?
And actually, you know, you raised a good point, Richard, that's not the, the point you're making, is, is a great point, but it reminds me of something I do want to say, and that is that it's been a tough summer, and it's not intended to be excuses for anything. I think, to the contrary, what I'm intending to say is that the town, the town operations, I think, went pretty well, not as, certainly not perfect, and there are things that we wanted to have happen either faster, or better, or differently, but we've really just been exceptionally shorthanded between the department heads we just spoke about leaving. In the case of the two chiefs, their positions then being vacant and the process of being filled. We've got some folks on both departments who are, who are out on injury, we've had turnover, and so we really just have not been at full strength at all this summer, and, you know, many, many town employees have stepped up their effort for just the day-to-day operations, and really, we've had a lot of circumstances, including Friday, that really rose way above the day-to-day normal, and they've, you know, really stretched themselves to continue to provide a high-quality, high-level of service, and, you know, I just want to commend the town employees for doing that, really, it has not been easy, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the day where we're back to full strength and can, you know, really not only get the day-to-day stuff done, but really continue to advance the quality of the organization.
Okay. Is that it for your Town Manager Report?
That's it, I'm done.
How about, let's get these block parties out of the way. Have you got a motion on block parties?
Yeah, I'll prove, I'll move that we approve the block party for Ellington Road for September 12th, rain date of September 13th.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All approved?
I'll prove, I move we approve the block party for Dartmouth, Falmouth, and Plymouth Roads for, for August 8th with a rain date of August 9th.
Second.
Any discussion? See, no discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Finally, I'll prove, I move we approve the closure of Long Meadow Street from Longfellow to Williams for the Center School, Annual Starter School Carnival on September 18th with a rain date of September 25th.
I'll second.
Second?
We have to turn.
Any discussion? You guys are rotating the second, right? Any discussion? See, and none, all in favor? Bye. Thank you, Mark.
Do we need to sign those?
Pardon?
We don't need to sign those.
Not, not these.
Wait.
They, they've got them over there. They, they don't trust me with originals.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, let's, what are you gonna do, complete streets or stormwater utility next?
I'm gonna go back.
You want to get the approval?
No, no.
Well, what I was thinking is, we'll leave that to last, because you're going to...
You can do, you can do whatever you want.
Okay, wouldn't that work better for you?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Stormwater, stormwater utility?
Oh. I'll give a short presentation on it. I always say, what are we trying to fix? And when it comes to stormwater sewer utilities, I've attended a couple of conferences, and it seems to fix a couple of problems, and one of the reasons that I, there are three reasons I think we should use, seriously consider stormwater utility. One is that there is a whole new system of requirements coming out of the EPA, which some will increase our costs, some won't, but it's a, a whole new MS4, they're called, permitting. I'm gonna pass this out. So, this is one of the reasons that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and MMA is suggesting that we consider stormwater utilities, because that way, we make sure that our, our stormwater maintenance program, which we do have one on currently, is fully funded and is progressing forward according to what our new EPA regulations are going to be. The other two things that the, having a stormwater utility will solve, is that, right now, all of our stormwater maintenance costs are going right through our property tax. So, when you're talking about, what are you talking about, our costs, you're talking about the Merryweather project, anything that has to do with drainage. And as the former town manager told me, Long Meadow's built on a big pile of sand, and as our drainage program is putting everything into the river, we're slowly, those, those drainage is, it's, it's a movable thing in town, and it's a very expensive part. So, right now, everything's going through the general fund, which the majority of our money is coming out of property taxes. If, so, this would help us pay for all of these very expensive projects in town, and Merryweather, I believe, was almost a million dollars, it was 800 and something. We had budgeted for over 900. Then, the third thing is, it allows more of a fair system of people that need the, the stormwater maintenance system will start paying for it. An example is, that if you put in a utility system, it's not just depend on people who are paying property taxes, but it involves even nonprofits in town. And the way they, you set up the stormwater maintenance utility is, you look at the impervious services, which would be parking lots, which would be, I think you can also look at the roofs. And so, everyone would be charged a certain amount of money per year, and I personally think we should then take that and cut that out of property taxes. So, in other words, if you're being charged $200 a year, that would be, that, since we're now paying through it through utility, we should not be, again, raising that money in the general funds, too. So, it would be a way of looking at making a more fair system and decreasing our reliance on the property taxes, and the people that really need it in town will be able to help pay for it, just like you have the nonprofits and all the businesses in town will pay right now for their sewer utility, they pay for their water utility, this will be the third utility fee that is out there. An interesting part about these programs, and there are several of them across the state, is that not only are there way of raising fees through the uses, but you can also mitigate. So, let's say if you have, it ends up your house is going to be a $100 fee, you can actually mitigate your cost by planting trees, there are, or putting together a special project near your curb, and so, the towns are presenting different ways in order to, you can mitigate your fees. So, I think that towns across the Commonwealth are encouraged to start looking at these because of these special requirements that are coming down the pike, but I think it also is a very interesting way for us to look at solving the problem of our over-dependence on property taxes right now, and the discussion we've had about property taxes going up two and a half percent every year. It's a complicated program, and that's why I sent by electronic email the two things that I had on my computer, and one, I think, was Chicopee's program, which is one of the oldest in the area. Right now, currently, there is Chicopee, Northampton, and Westfield have programs that have been out there and been working for a couple of years. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, a couple of months ago, said there are grants out there for other towns to look into it, and I said, well, I don't think the select board's ready to make a decision on it, and so I think Agawam did file for the grant, but there is, I think it's something we really should be considering. One of the conferences I did attend said, if you don't have one in now, you're really sort of late, you really have to start moving a little quicker to get on board to see what the town requirements are. One of the conferences also said they expect these new EPAs to cost the average town anywhere from $100,000 a year to half a million. I talked to the town manager about that, and he says, we are fairly advanced in our stormwater maintenance program that we've already put together, and so I'm not sure if we need to worry about how much the costs and the changes are going to be. I also spoke to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission today, who said the final regulations have not been decided yet. They kept saying it was going to be this month, this month, now they're saying December, the final regulation should be out there, and we'll be able to do analysis. And we'll be able to do analysis of what those costs would be.
Is that for the state of Massachusetts?
Well, it's interesting, it's, no, it's a federal regulations, but there are only.
I thought MS four had been in effect for several years.
They're doing a huge, um, change in it.
Okay, so it was in effect.
It was in effect, but there's going to be.
Because I fell under MS four in my last job and I always put a lot of work into it.
No, there's a brand-new regulations that are supposed to be much more stringent.
MS four A?
Yeah, I have no idea. I have no idea. But, um, all I know is that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, MMA, were writing um, to try to make changes because they were being so strict that it was going to be very burdensome to the towns.
I see they're, they're calling it phase one and phase two here now?
I'm not too sure. You know, understand these things better than I do. And that's why I had mentioned it to the finance committee to see what their views were on us putting it together, because it is a large project to, um, start a new utility in town. And that's it, unless you have some questions.
So.
Yeah, start.
I just had two questions based on what you just said. You said something about being built, Long Meadow's built on sand, which I agree with that proposition. So, but what's, I, I didn't quite get the significance of it.
Well, right now, when, a lot of our drainage projects are because there's erosion.
Okay.
And the, the land is eroding and we use the dingles. And a lot of our sewer pipes are very old and our drainage pipes are old and, um, so what's happening is our, our, not only is our system old and it's crumbling, but it's literally sinking. So there's a lot of times we have to go in and do major projects. I know, since I've been here, there was, um, what's the name of that street where there was erosion near the Connecticut River.
Ely.
Ely.
Ely Road, Merryweather, all of these, um, it's erosion that's occurring around town that we have to shore up. And even I would say the North End Interceptor would probably be considered one of that, because we're talking about erosion, um, at ninety-one. In fact, someone told me the history of ninety-one is they basically cut into the mountain and, in order to make ninety-one, which means you now have the erosion occurring off the side of the hill. That's an artificial hill.
So, and you said it would be fairer, um, and then I was looking at the, um, materials you sent around.
Mm-hmm.
It talks about, um, that you figure out the gross area of impervious surface for each parcel. So you talk about like a parking lot, that's a really big, um, impervious surface, I assume. Um, I, I guess, uh, do you know how difficult or easy it is to make those calculations? You know, for every parcel?
You probably know by an idea.
Yeah, I mean Lancaster, where I came from before, I think I talked about this, had a stormwater utility. And I was not involved in the creation of it, but I did manage it and, and this is kind of where we're, you know, and Paul Pasterzic is here, because he's also been to a seminar on establishing stormwater utility and can, and can jump in as well, but uh, it's a pretty, I'd say scientific, but I mean, I think the next step within this, if we were serious about it, would be to hire, retain some kind of engineering firm to help us do those calculations. A lot of it is done with really aerial photos and a, a computer program that reads an aerial photo that can distinguish between branches and rooftops and parking lots and things like that. And I, and I want to echo what Marie said about our, you know, we, our stormwater system, stormwater management system. You know, I think the communities that don't have curb and gutter, um, and, you know, separated stormwater system, some people, you know, some communities have their stormwater and their wastewater overflow is connected. That's, EPA is really not down with that at all. Um, some of the more rural communities just have what they call it sheet flow, which the water just drains off in an uncontrolled way into ditches and things like that. And so this, this MS four rewrite is really addressed, designated to address a lot of that. Um, we are fortunate that because we're so built out, we have curb and gutter and drain and manholes and storm drain pipes all over. But as she noted, you know, the things all end up going out, these outfalls, um, into dingles and things like that, which is appropriate. Uh, that, you know, that's, that's why we separate the stormwater from the, to kind of recharge our, the natural, uh, you know, water environment. Um, but then you have Crestview Circle, for example, it's not an outfall, but it is a culvert. So the water that passes through the dingle can continue to drain. We've got, like I said, we've got just many, many of them in town. But there's also little things, uh, street sweeping to keep particulate matter out of the stormwater. Particulate matters, you know, just, you know, bits of pavement, uh, and I mean like particulate matter, um, tiny fragments of pavement, sand, salt, um, leaves, things like that. Uh, so that's why we, you know, street sweeping is a stormwater, um, utility maintenance activity. And, you know, the big thing for a utility versus funding another general fund is, you know, churches have impervious surfaces. You know, tax-exempt entities have impervious surfaces and so it would be like a utility charge, like any other utility charge where a tax-exempt status wouldn't, um, you know, get, get you up from under, and it is a way to offset, you know, relieve the general fund from, you know, from, or increase, increase contributions to the costs associated with maintaining our stormwater system, um, to people who don't pay property taxes.
Are we falling under MS four now?
Everyone, well, no, I don't, I don't think they've fully promulgated it.
Yeah, because like I can't see the date where it triggered in on communities our size.
They've had a bunch of false starts on this, Richard.
Okay.
I, I've honestly stopped tracking the date. You know, I did go to, I did go to a training on MS four. Again, my takeaway in a town engineer, you know, our, our shared takeaway was that it's not gonna have as big an impact in terms of physical improvements we're going to need to make compared, to come into compliance compared to other towns. But we will still have to do a lot of programmatic changes to how we do it. Um, but I've really stopped paying attention because it's been, it's coming, though it's not, it's coming, though it's not. And I think forces at higher pay grades than ours are at play, kind of, you know, impacting this regulatory promulgation. And so I don't, you know, I guess, I just keep waiting for them to say it's.
Well, also, we're rather blessed as we don't have an industrial community within our town too, so that's gonna help us a great deal, listed discharge and all those other facets. Okay, so you, as far as you know, we're really not under MS four mandated right now, then?
Not right now, but I, I do, I do support, you know, Marie did bring this forward, I, I do support exploring this option for Long Meadow, because again, it's not necessarily, I should say it's not about regulatory compliance, it's not about as much the big expensive projects for me as it is funding the day-to-day things we do to maintain our stormwater system and having those costs shared by everyone who generates
Alright.
um, stormwater or a surface, you know, water. Uh, and the equivalent runoff unit thing is, is, to go back to the previous point, parking lots, roofs, um, you know, like the different buildings. And there's different ways you can structure your unit of measure for how you build utility. And that's where I would want, you know, for serious, we would probably go for some kind of appropriation, either a reserve fund request or potentially a, you know, a cash appropriation at, at special town meeting to retain, you know, some kind of engineering firm to help us do this. But there's not a lot of interest in the concept at the board level, then I wouldn't necessarily spend the time to do the, uh, procurement to find out who's out there doing it and what's it gonna cost us.
Mark.
Marie and Stephen, I, I have a, a thousand questions here, but I'm gonna start with just a couple. One, you know, clearly, uh, there, there's some real merit to, to doing this with all the, the reasons both of you said. I think the, the watch out for me though is to make sure that this becomes an, instead of, instead of, uh, in addition to, so that our town residents don't end up paying the property taxes they're paying now, going up two and a half percent a year, and then pay an additional stormwater utility. And, and, and I'm not sure how we do that, but I think that whatever we do, we need to be very cautious, because I don't think we'll sell it unless we have those guarantees in place as part of this system. And, and, you know, I'm sure there's a bunch of ways to do it, but I'm, I, I'll just comment that we have to figure out a way to do that. The other thing that I'm trying to get a hold of, uh, or get a handle on, as I think back on the stormwater projects, whether it's the culverts and there've been a, two or three culvert projects we've been doing, a couple of storm sewer drainage, Merryweather clearly, and Down Williams was one of the largest. But the order of magnitude of how much money this is and needs to raise or would raise each year. I mean, if, if we're talking about, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year, the question is, is the, i- i- is the administration of this worth the, the amount? If we're talking about a million and a half to two million dollars a year, that clearly has a, potentially a different answer. And, and I think we need to get that idea, not only of what we've done, but with what we've done, how much there is, you know, how, how would we put together a five-year budget for a stormwater utility department, if you will? And I think the final thing that I'm concerned about, what ask that we do is part of our preparation for stronger consideration of this is, you know, we don't manage as a town any utilities. We're not like Holyoke that has Holyoke Electric Power Company or Chicopee that has a utility or, or something like that. We have no utilities and, and the ability to establish, set up a utility in the town, I think, may be a, a little bit more involved, uh, than just saying, yeah, we want to do it. Uh, it may have involved changes to our town charter, certainly to our bylaws. Uh, how we control the utility, who's got the authority of the utility, who runs the utility, who makes decisions? Can it independently borrow from town, separate from town meeting, all these dozens and dozens of, of questions at some point. And so I guess my, my request would be, uh, that as we move forward, and I do support moving forward, I think it's got some real good potential here. I think we make sure we understand the order of magnitude, how much we're talking about, how we're gonna ma, how we would manage this and clearly set up a way so that it provides total payment relief to town residents. And I say that because, I, I, it was a hundred and twenty-five pages, Marie, I only got it three o'clock, I didn't read the whole thing. But, but the, you know, the issue is, you know, if, if as a resident, it costs me a hundred and fifty dollars of my tax money to, to pay for storm sewers or, or utilities, as a tax payment, it's deductible. As a utility, it's not deductible from what I saw. And there may be tax implications to residents of, you know, I, I, I want to make sure I'm truly saving money if I'm paying out the same amount and it's no longer deductible. Understanding all those things and, and showing the, both for average, high and low-paying residents, how it works. It's gonna take a while to sell this and I, like I said, I, I generally support the idea of, of having a separate structure for paying for storm sewers, especially in the town of Long Meadow that is built on more than sand, Alex, it's built on dingles. It's built on culverts. I mean, we've got dozens and dozens of creeks and culverts and things in the town. But I think we need to do an awful lot of homework before we just sign up for what we want here.
Yeah, Stephen wanted to.
Just give a quick comment, because I, Mark, I agree with, um, I think just about everything you said there. Uh, there are a lot of questions to be answered, which, but it, it may cost us some money to answer those questions and that's why we're kind of having this dialogue. Uh, in Lancaster, just, just for example, what they did was they, they, they made the initial charge, they froze, they, they created an initial charge that was nominal. And then they froze it for three years. And so even though taxes didn't necessarily go down, um, you know, the utility, the structure of the utility was there. And so taking the long view, eventually, you know, ten, fifteen years down the line, it will pay for itself and hopefully create the tax relief. But you make it, you make it nominal enough so it doesn't have, is a long transitional period. In terms of managing the utility, the thing I'd say that, that I, I didn't agree with is that the stuff, the work, the actual physical work and the, and the oversight work that would be needed to manage this utility is stuff we're already doing. So it's, you know, it's not like adding a new function like becoming a cable utility or a, um, electricity utility. This is, we do all the stuff every day. It, this would just be a different way to, to, uh, it really, and it's really calling it an enterprise fund is probably more accurate than calling it a separate utility.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I guess, you know, when I look at something like this, I always think of who, who's gonna suffer the most from this kind of a policy? And, um, so I, my first impression was something like the Willie Ross School for the Deaf, which provides a great service to Western Mass. And they probably don't have a ton of money and, and if they, if they have to pay this rate for their parking lot and for their playground, um, you know, how do you adjust, how do you make things like that not cause a school like that to have jeopardy? I mean, you, we have some other, um, you know, larger nonprofits that probably could absorb the cost, but there's always gonna be some smaller ones. And you wonder, how do we have this sort of fit with that model? So that the, the people who, because I can't think of anyone else who would suffer more than Willie Ross. I don't know if anyone else on the board would have any ideas about that. I know the Montessori School, they, they don't even have a parking lot, so it wouldn't really affect that much. I suppose what they could do, in, in some cases, is get rid of their blacktop and, and, and have gravel, you know? That would be a, a way to avoid this kind of a thing, but, um, um, so that's, you know, I guess that's the, the main thing, is looking at how do we put this forth in a way that, um, the people who would be affected the most might have some leniency, some, uh, some relief just because of their size. As a small agency, you know, they probably can't absorb a cost as easily as some larger facility, so.
Paul?
Um, just to answer some of Mark's questions regarding cost, I looked at the FY sixteen budget and, you know, the little that I know about this, just to try to get some, some estimates of what I see in the budget. Our biggest cost associated with this stormwater utility is, is basically in the infrastructure. Uh, we're basically paying, uh, a little less than two hundred thousand dollars in debt service for the projects, as, as you mentioned, the Woodside Merryweather Project. Crestview would be another one. And, uh, uh, we just recently had a nine hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and four thousand, um, bond issued for four separate projects too. So above and beyond that, you know, things that would be included, the catch basin cleaning, um, along with the street sweeping and drain maintenance. Um, it comes up to like two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We're not even talking, you know, thereafter, we would have to do some allocation for some of the other equipment costs and things like that. So I, at this point in time, you know, very generically looking at this, you know, I would assume it's somewhere in the area of like three hundred thousand dollars that we'd be talking about. Um, you know, and then to guarantee, I don't think there's any way that we could guarantee a one-to-one benefit from tax dollars to, to feed things like that. But if you really wanted to guarantee something like that, that you're not gonna raise the money, there is such thing as an underwrite.
Right.
That, I mean, that would be the, be the way to do it, um, you know, to have that.
Just take that money off the tax.
Be able to do it.
Right, right.
So, I mean, just, I, I just bring that out. The notes that I have, uh, which are, which are somewhat dated, said that the final, uh, information is due out in December of two thousand and fifteen. But that could have been pushed back, because this information is, is six to eight months old now, as it is, so.
But that's on MS four.
That's on the MS four.
Yeah, but we, there's, there's two discussions. There's one is the stormwater utility and then there's the MS four. And they feed each other, but MS four is not related to the stormwater utility.
I mean, insofar as it'll make it more expensive.
Right.
But you don't, even without MS four, there's valid, there's validity to.
Right, but I mean, I want to separate those two issues. The one's the regulations and the other's the funding mechanism.
Correct.
MS four is gonna tell us how we manage and then stormwater is gonna tell us if we can afford to manage. So, and we don't have the answers right now. This is just real preliminary. The only thing I'd like to know is, uh, what's our next action?
I think.
Want me to make a quick question?
Go ahead, Marie.
I know you're talking about, um, funding for a consultant. And, um, the email I received today said AGWAM was able to file for a grant for that. So we might want to look for grants to be able to.
Because we know we're gonna fall under MS four.
That's what I understood. I, I, they were having trouble giving me the answer to that, but two, two gentlemen told me Long Meadow would, would fall under MS four.
Yeah, it will.
And so, and, and part of that will actually be testing our drainage water.
Right. Well, especially with the proximity of Connecticut River, we're a natural one, because of all of the, the possibilities of BOD, addities and everything else. I mean, they're gonna be after us. We're, we're in, all the ones on the river are gonna be hotspots.
And we could even check with our state senator and state representative to see if they're grants to help us get on board with this. Because I know they are encouraging this with the clean water, uh, funding that they had about, uh, last year. So maybe there are grants out there to help us out.
Okay. So again, I'll ask, uh, what's the flavor of the board for our next action item on this? I, I think MS four is coming. And the stormwater utility is a way to offset the costs of MS four.
And the other thing, if I may, Richard, is we talk all the time about increasing revenue for relieving tax relief, but also relieving pressures on our levy. And while I agree in principle with Mark that it should not be an add-on, um, you know, it does, it is a measure to re, relieve the pressure on our prop two-and-a-half levy. Uh, it doesn't mean we have, we have to do it, but there are, as we've, we've discussed a lot, there aren't a lot of, you know, really reliable options that, local options for, you know, property tax relief, um, and, but this is one of them.
With this, there is a very direct correlation between impervious surfaces and the regulations of MS four. So I mean, this is a direct correlation. If you have a massive parking lot, you are a lot more demand on that system than me with my residential side or my driveway. So there is a correlation here, which is a natural correlation, but. So there is a correlation here, which is a natural correlation, but, Marie, you talked about grants, you wanna research out the grants?
Well, no, I, I think maybe we should just have a motion, a move to take the next step to investigate a stormwater utility for the town of Long Meadow.
Do you want, is that your motion?
Yeah.
But, but, can I?
It's just taking the next step.
But, I mean, the, I, maybe we should just second it for discussion, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'll second it for discussion.
I, I have no clue what that means, take the next step, I mean, you know.
It did direct the town manager to look into what the grants or the cost for consultants would be. The town manager seems to recommend the first step is consulting. I know that there's also a idea on some of those, those two programs that eventually we need to put in a task force, or, or, which includes community members, 'cause it, it's, like you said, it's how we're gonna set it up, and then we need to bring this in front of the town of Long Meadow, once we, 'cause the town of Long Meadow has to accept this, I think, in a series of bylaw changes.
Yeah, my, my further comment, though, to the motion is that I, I think it's too general. I think that, I have no problem with a motion to direct the town manager to investigate consultants and what they can provide us, in, in terms of setting up and, and answering some of the questions that we brought up here about a stormwater utility, or enterprise fund, or whatever it is we're gonna call it, and I think what we call it is as important as anything else, but just to say we're gonna take the next step is, for me, too general.
There should be, if, if they mandate MS4, there should be grant money available for that implementation program, too. I mean, they should, they should give relief, because it's gonna be a moment, they're gonna have to come in and design manuals and everything for us on the operational manuals. And then the stormwater utility is a second, it's a second motion, they're, they are separate. I mean, they're, they're only connected because we wish them to be connected, but they're two separate entities.
I will make my motion more detailed of to direct the town manager to look into what would be the process or the next steps in order to, for us to vote on a stormwater enterprise fund or utility. I, I don't think, if I, if we say we're going to actually vote on accepting a utility in town, that is difficult until we really have more information.
I'm not sure we have the authority to do that, I think it's a town meeting kind of thing, but.
No, I, I think what, I think, we're kind of confusing it a little bit. I, I think what we're trying to get to, if I understand Marie's, the intent of the motion, is make it a board directive for me to spend time on doing this, and do the research for something that's, that, to spend staff time and kind of, you know, get down the line, and actually do some kind of procurement process, even if we don't award a contract, at least go out and do some kind of request for qualifications, or something like that. But if, like I said, if there's no appetite at the board level for this, you know, 'cause in, the reason why we do it that way, I mean, typically, this was something generated at the board level. A, a, you know, it's like, if there's an initiative that, that we generate internally that we think is good, and then I would do this work and come through it and make a recommendation to the board, similar to the regional dispatch, which was generated at the staff level. This was generated by a board member, I think what we're looking for is, you know, buy-in from a majority of the board that this is worthwhile pursuing, right? Is that?
Yes, 'cause, just because I feel that it's worth pursuing, these are town resources, and it would be taking us a, a step in a certain direction, and it would have, I think the board would have to make that decision.
I'm not sure if I could, I, I mean, at, at this point, I guess I don't know what else we want to ask the town manager to, to direct town resources to do, because we haven't gone through our FY16, you know, goal-setting or priority-setting program, which we were gonna do in the month of August. I'm wondering if there's gonna be a lot lost if we hold back on this and try to integrate it into the bigger picture, so that we know that we're not asking this independent of all the other things that, that may come up. I suspect it, I, I won't say that, I, you know, I'd like to think it might come up and, and make the cut anyway, but maybe the right way to do that is rather than one, one by one assign the town manager to do things, is put it together as part of a larger discussion on priorities and goals.
Well, and we're waiting for, for the consultant to come in.
Well, but, but, but is another four weeks gonna make the difference on this one?
No, I just explained, we're waiting on the goals until we go through this process.
I mean, really, ultimately, the, the big next step, if we're gonna do it, would be a bylaw, establishing the enterprise fund, right, I, I guess, Paul, I don't know if that's, you, you know, you'd have a bylaw governing the utility, and that would be a town meeting vote. So we're still looking at March, before you have to make a decision on a bylaw at the earliest.
Could you?
Yeah.
I, I think it is worth investigating. It, I think what Tom brought up was a good point, and to me, this would be something I'd like to know sooner rather than later in the process, which is sort of the order of magnitude of the fees that we're looking at. I mean, 'cause I take your point, I mean, like, if it's absolutely gonna crush our churches in town, you know, that might be a deal breaker for me, you know? But if it's, you know, relatively, you know, manageable sums, you know, based on this, you know, estimate of $300,000, then, you know, the idea has merit, you know? So it's, I, I'm just, I'm contributing that as, to put some meat on the bones of what we would wanna be looking at, you know, in this initial step.
Go ahead.
No, I, I think that's a good, a great point, Alex, I, I mean, like I said, my, my thing is to get that, to really design the system for Long Meadow, it does, it takes some expense, I don't know how much in-house capacity we have to do this, but I do think when, if we did take, take the steps and end up retaining a consultant to help us do this, certainly, it's part of their mission would be to come up with good options. At the end of the day, the select board is going to be the stormwater utility commissioners, and it's gonna be the select board's deci, policy decision on how that gets impacted, similar to solid waste recycling fees that are subsidized by the general fund per a policy choice by the select board. So I, I wanna make sure we're clear, we're not establishing something that's gonna, on day one, you know, create this huge burden, I think the select board will ultimately maintain control on where that needle is between how much is the general fund supporting these functions, and how much is this enterprise fund supporting it, and then where do the rates fall out in that regard.
We're not gonna get to the next step in the process, though, until you can come back with a price that it's going to be required to do the study, to answer the questions, Alex, that you guys are asking, 'cause we're not gonna pull it out of our hip pocket, that's gonna come to the analysis of all the stormwater in our community.
But, yeah, Richard, I mean, you know, if Paul Pasterzik's right, and, and, let's say instead of $300,000, it's $500,000, 'cause there's a lot more work to be done, or could be done, a year, you know, $500,000, if it was just homeowners evenly dispersed, it's $100 a person, so you're gonna say, I, I, a house. So I would set that up as, that's probably the maximum. I have no clue what the division is between non-taxpaying impervious surfaces and, and taxpaying, you know, impervious surfaces for using that number of 5,000 residents, but, you know, the way the document described it today in my quick overview is, it set up a, a unit of impervious surface, which was the average of whatever, right? And, and, so if you look at that, you know, because we're so heavy into residents in this town, you know, we're probably, you know, within 20% of that number, I would think. I don't, can't imagine the residences are gonna pay $40 or $30, and all the rest is gonna be picked up by everybody else. You know, we're, we're a primarily residential community. So Alex, from your perspective, I mean, you know, if, if you figure a residence is gonna cost about 100 bucks, compare your driveway with the driveway of a church, or the driveway of a shopping center, and the multiples of that, that they are, that's how many multiples of $100 they're gonna pay a year, I think, as a.
It, it, those are all policy decisions that get made along the line, when you see, like, if you do A, then B is the resulting fee. Let me just kind of, kind of bring it back to where we were with the motion. I think when, because this is an, an initiative that's been generated by a select board member, I wanna make sure that it's not a, you know, and this is something we've talked about in the roles and responsibilities conversation, and Mark, I do support the idea of maybe folding in with a broader discussion about goals, and if, you know, if you wanna wait till then, that's fine, but I think the point is, one select board member saw this as a priority, I think we're trying to get to the point where we have buy-in from the rest of the board before we, you know, spend a lot of time chasing it down. I mean, I, I support the concept, I just didn't initiate it. So I guess if we wanna hold off until we have a facilitate discussion, and try to, and see if it shakes out as a goal, in the goals discussion, that's fine, we just wanna make sure that this is supported by more than just one member of the board, and somehow document that.
I support it. So, there's two matters. Okay, what, what do you guys think? You wanna put this off until we have this goal session?
There is a motion on the floor, so people could just not vote on my motion.
Well, we're still in discussion.
Oh, you are.
We're under discussion, discussion or whatever.
Well, I, I mean, it also, I mean, I appreciate all the work Marie's done, and going to the training and understanding this, and presenting it, and, and we're lucky that Stephen has had some experience with this firsthand, and when he was in Lancaster. Is there any chance we could hear something from folks like in Chicopee or Northampton? I mean, and, and sort of, would that, for me, that would be helpful, I don't know if other people on the board, because I don't know if, if boards do that, if they go to other towns and say, well, this is our experience in our town, what do you guys think? Is that at all an option?
Now, I, I suggest you come up with the questions that you have, as opposed, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what they're gonna tell us, other than, I mean, I, I read the Chicopee thing that they, we presented, it was pretty clear that they support it, they love it, they do it again in a heartbeat kind of thing, but, you know, having to come in here short of us having specific questions, I think that, that's to my mind, I mean, I, I read in their document today, the kinds of things of what they like, and I recommend that we all do the same thing, but.
Interesting aspect to all this, which I'm not sure comes out in the papers, or what I said, is that people can mitigate it, too. So let's say when they, they're going to do their new parking lot in front of the shops, there's a certain impervious surface that they can decide to use, that really decrease our costs in town, and can decrease their, their costs projected forward in the way, 'cause then it becomes a, a rebate, sort of, or, you know, a decrease in, in their fees. So let's say Willie Ross is, their fee's gonna be $500, and they really don't wanna spend that, well, you can actually go and decide to plant trees in an area that will mitigate the drainage in that area, and then your fees can come down. So there's a whole program for mitigation, and, that will bring down the fees, and it's a way of almost working together with the residents to decrease our costs, because they've taken care of our drainage issues in certain areas. And at the same time, when these MS4 comes in, there are going to be fines, and so a lot of these programs are also educating the public, like, do not throw your paint down the sewer, do not throw these things into the dingles. And so part of the money we will be spending on our storm drainage maintenance program will be education of the public, too, so they can avoid those type of fees. So those are two aspects that I, I thought might answer some of your questions.
Yeah, that's good, 'cause then an agency could do a fundraiser to take care of their mitigation costs, and, and it would work out fine.
Willie Ross, Willie Ross would be a good fit for Green Roof.
Oh, yeah. Impervious serving.
Yeah, then the roof would no longer be counted as impervious.
Well, the, the bottom line is, though, we're guessing until we get some more information.
I think I have, if, I don't know if you wanna withdraw the motion or take a vote or not, but I have a, I have a sense that is a consensus that this is an intriguing concept, and maybe we'll just affirm it with the goals.
I think, I think that's good. Marie, put it in the goals, we'll talk about them.
And the goals will be in August, right? My only concern about that is for everyone to keep their ear on the ground, because I know the grants, I hate to see grant money disappearing.
It's gonna be a long process to build this in, so I mean, if we miss one grant cycle, we may be in for another one.
So I'll shoot an email to Patty over at Pioneer Valley Planning, withdraw my motion, because it can wait as long as I know the grant information's flowing to the town manager.
Well, we're not gonna let it fall off the radar screen.
Okay.
No, 'cause it's a valid idea, and it's, it's something the community has to at least evaluate, because we're gonna borne the cost of MS4. Okay. Okay. Well, let's see. We've got complete streets.
Did you wanna?
Yeah, sure.
You did a wonderful job, Alex.
So, I think it was, I think I emailed it a little while, the draft bylaw, a little while ago, and I think it's part of the packet, and even though I was the scrivener, this is the result of discussions that Marie and I have had about complete streets, and, yeah, a sort of more general discussion about increasing walkability and bikeability of Long Meadow. So let me just give you some nuts and bolts about the bylaw. First of all, it's modeled after the Ogdenburg, New York ordinance, so it's, here it's a bylaw. Ogdenburg is a city, so therefore it's an ordinance. In that case, it was passed by their city council, here it would be a town meeting. But the substance of it is pretty much following Ogdenburg, which happened to have the number one complete streets policy of 2014, as determined by this national organization called Smart Growth America. So that's at least some endorsement of it. I also looked at other complete streets policies and bylaws, including Holyoke, Acton in Massachusetts, and so it, it was sort of modeled to take into account Massachusetts, and, you know, the particular characteristics of Long Meadow, for example, I think there was a reference to, like, pedestrian malls, you know, that seemed kind of unlikely to happen here in Long Meadow. The way I think about this complete streets bylaw, it's, it's sort of like more of a statement of intention to improve safe and easy access to our streets, and more particularly pedestrians and bikes, and public transportation. I mean, the bylaw does address making our streets better for cars, but quite frankly, I think we already, you know, are focused on cars when it comes to streets. So, I mean, it, it's part of the idea of looking at all modes of transportation together. But as I say, it, to me, it's something of a statement of intention of, of looking at the issue. It, it's not prescriptive, in the sense of telling you exactly what to do, or, or there being mandatory requirements of our streets, I don't think that's what this is, it's certainly not drafted that way, it's not, you know, intended to supplant case-by-case determinations of what's best for a particular street. So it, what it really does is, what, the difference between what we have now and, and what would be in place with the bylaw, is that it has to be considered. And, and it's not just things like bike lanes, but one of the things that Marie and I talked about is, you know, so somebody with a wheelchair can, like, get on and off a sidewalk, you know, like, that's one of the measures of the complete streets program. And the other thing that I think is important about this draft is that it applies to privately constructed streets and parking lots, and I think it's there that it would make a difference. You know, right now, you know, we have town projects, there's been no expression, you know, by this board or anybody else in town that, you know, complete streets principles are to be integrated into our projects, and certainly nothing for private projects. So that would also be part of this bylaw. The other thing that I think is useful about this bylaw, as opposed to other drafts that are out there, that other communities have used, is there's a section on implementation. So it's not just a statement of intention and, and a hope for the best, but, you know, some means of evaluating whether this policy direction is being implemented. And again, it's not like it penalizes, or it requires any particular benchmarks be reached, but it, it is a way of looking at it. And, and I think the measures that are in there, which again are taken off the Ogdenburg policy, are good ones. And, you know, right now, you know, bike lanes, I think we're at zero, so, you know, hopefully we can, you know, get above zero, and, and, you know, pedestrian, you know, accommodation, you know? And some of these things, Long Meadow already does well, you know, one of the great things about Long Meadow is the number of sidewalks, but I think with the level of traffic that we're gonna be having, you know, with, you know, all the things that, you know, bring more traffic into our town, you know, this is the sort of thing that can help move us forward. town, you know, this is the sort of thing that can help move us forward. Now, it did occur to me, you know, as we were discussing this, you could make something like this more mandatory, more prescriptive, you know, you could, you could set down things that have to be done. You know, you could require a bike lane unless you showed a good reason otherwise. But I think the bylaw kind of strikes a balance between, you know, being flexible and, you know, providing some direction. And, you know, if at some point, you know, you want to make it more prescriptive, you could do that in the future. So, so that's the proposal, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to speak in favor of complete streets. I thought it was an interesting program when I first heard about it, but then the more I heard about, the more I thought, wow, this fits perfectly for Long Meadow. We have an amazing asset throughout the town, and that is our sidewalks are everywhere. People can walk around town, and that is unusual even in small New England towns. And I think that, Richard, when he came on the board, you made a point of trying to push how much we're investing in those sidewalks to protect those assets. And this will allow us to put in measurable goals so we can make sure that these assets are being not only taken care of in town, but we're expanding them. And I know the new project, we're looking up at Converse Street, we're looking about expanding the sidewalks there. We had someone come in front of us on Linwood saying, we really would love sidewalks here. And this says, this is a priority in our town, and this policy, if we accept it and put in the bylaws, it's asking our town manager to always look at it and see how far we can improve our pedestrian and bike traffic in town. Then, when I attended that meeting planning had on the shops, they did a count, traffic counts. But what came out is they also did pedestrian counts, and they said, we're so high, substantially higher than other communities like us, which shows that this is what Long Meadow residents really like. They like the ability to be able to walk in their streets, their kids to ride their bikes. When I attended a couple of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission meetings, which I found out, it didn't, wasn't what I thought it was going to be, but as I listened, your tip projects, you get more points if you're complete streets. If you're not a complete street, your projects are brought down, you get eight extra points if you have accepted complete streets. And complete streets is not only a federal project, it's something that the Commonwealth has been pushing because they're trying to look at using alternative motives of traffic, such as pedestrian walking, and we are just a perfect town for that. Also grants, if we wanted to include, you know, actually have bike trails, I know Alex and I have talked about improving the connectability of our bike trails in towns with other towns, there's grants involved with that and available for that. But you need to be a complete streets town. So it's almost like, it's a perfect fit, I think, for Long Meadow, plus the carrots are sitting out there to help us become more of a pedestrian bike friendly town. We do have a group in town that, I keep forgetting their name, they're the Transition of Long Meadow?
Transition.
Yeah, and they have been doing some wonderful things with bike, and they've been requesting the bike trails. So I'm hoping that the, this board will accept Long Meadow and help us become a complete streets town.
Mark, go ahead.
I guess I'm having, struggling with the concept of accepting complete streets as a bylaw that is, to use Alex's words, is more in statement of intent than it is prescriptive, you know, and to the degree that it's not, nothing in there is mandatory. It says, we will try to, and we will endeavor to, and we will design with this in mind, you know. I guess the question is, although it's nice, what impact does it have? What binding, you know, requirements does it, does it, does it have? And is it any more binding than our planning commission saying they support this kind of, these proposals, and are going to be requiring it in the proposals that become before the planning commission, whether it be for, you know, private parking lots or sidewalks or other things? Because if it's not prescriptive, if it's not mandatory, the concern I have is it's not likely to happen, given the constraints on cost short of, of a very long period of time. And I'll give you an example, the curb cuts to allow, whether it's bicycles or wheelchairs or whatever, to go from our sidewalk level down to our street level, you know, if it's mandatory, it becomes extraordinarily expensive to run around this town and put all of them in. And if it's not mandatory, it's going to be many, many, many years before we've made a significant impact on it. And so, you know, things like that, that will help the implementation of additional modes of transportation, you know, or travel through walking in streets and things like that, seems to me that it either should be prescriptive or I'm not convinced we absolutely need it. And I guess I need to be convinced, and I suspect there may be other people in town who feel the way I do, because it's going to come before a town meeting, and they're going to say, why do we need this? And, you know, if we can't just agree, we want to do it anyway, we'll just do it.
Well, I, I like the proposal. I think that this is the role of the select board, you know, to help look at policy and shape it in a way that when the planning board and when DPW approaches a project, they'll say, okay, we have to remember the select board would like lines in here for bike riders, and they make sure the curb cuts. I think we've done a great job with curb cuts. We have a lot of kids riding their bikes to school. I think it's really refreshing and to see that in a town. And I think it should come from us to support that, that thinking. You know, I know, I live on a street that does have some bike lanes along Middle Street, and I think, you know, it'd be great to have them in more places than that. And setting the kind of goals in the material you sent me, you know, those are very reasonable goals. And each year, we could say, well, we've done this, and we've done this, and it just puts this sort of thinking out in the forefront. Because other towns like East Long Meadow are, you know, they have a bike path. It would be nice if we could have something that would sort of connect our community to other communities, you know, maybe even in Connecticut, you know. So, no, it's great. Thank you for your work.
Okay, we're not going to need to vote on this tonight. This has been brought in as a bylaw. And what I'd like to do, I'd like to hear next meeting and the meeting after, we've got a new director of DPW coming in. I'd like to get some input from the new director of DPW. And I'd also, at that point, like to have any concerns, Stephen, that you have rolled into the same package, we can get a little more briefing. Marie, I don't, I don't feel the urgency, because we're going to go to the fall town meeting. It's the quickest we can get it on. Certainly, this could be encapsulated in a bylaw pretty quick at that point.
Yeah.
Would you guys agree?
No, I agree. Yeah, I mean, I think as long as we get a chance to look at it before fall town meeting.
Yeah.
Before we've had the.
We'll have a new director in there pretty quick. Would you agree to want to get some input out of this?
I agree to that. I'm just looking at the timeline that this is a draft.
September.
Something like this would have to go through the town council and the various departments to come out the other end and some recommendations. So I hate to have us push it out too far because you're going to need it by mid-September, right?
September 21st.
And, and an example of why do we need complete streets is that if we had complete streets a year ago, I think that part of the scope on some of these projects would have been looking at bike lanes. It would have been looking at enhancing our sidewalks. And then the other thing is that you said teeth in it. Teeth is going to depend on this board on setting its goals. So if we set goals in five years, we want to increase sidewalks or things like that, there's a certain amount of measure, then we start making progress. But, so I don't mind putting it off. I just think that the town manager and the employees would have to let us know what the timeline would have to be in order for us to successfully bring this forward.
The warrant shut off is September 21st.
Yeah, but I mean, you guys, this is something you guys are generating, so you can amend the language of this anytime during the discussion of the warrant.
We can open and close the warrant on will.
Okay.
No, but even if the cutoff for marginal submissions is the 21st, but you can essentially modify this any way you want until the warrant, the warrants.
Marie, I don't plan on letting the time run out on this, getting it on. I'd just like to get some more input on it.
Yeah, I think the traffic committee should look at this. I mean, have some practical concerns with it. I mean, I think it's, Alex, as you suggested, being kind of a general policy statement. As long as the board's comfortable with the notion that there's going to be a lot of times where we just simply can't do this for a lack of resources or simply a lack of right-of-way width. And we had the conversation about bike lanes on Shake a Row is a perfect example, simply can't be built there and meet the standards that complete the streets has for the width of bike lanes. Because we had that presentation, I think, from, somebody came and gave us that presentation about bike lanes.
Transition group.
Right. And I think our engineering department followed up with the report after transitions came, about why certain places just simply can't support bike lanes that meet the standards that they want to have. I do agree. In practice, we do a lot of this already, especially with regards to sidewalks. Whenever we do a project, we do do these things, which is why I think making the policy statement is a good idea, especially if it gives you favor with tip projects. I just want to make sure that it doesn't, that, like you said, there are going to be times where exceptions are going to need to be granted, and that's where I would think the exception, the authority to grant exceptions may be on a rethought. Maybe be kind of like with the traffic calming policy, where I think it's shared responsibility or recommendation or something like that. It's just something for consideration.
Well, that's what I would hope that you would come back with your director.
Yeah, we'll take a more in-depth look with, and it'll be the end of the month, but the traffic committee can start on this, and we can certainly.
Right. And you know what Marie's concerns are in getting it on the fall town warrant.
And Richard, if I could just respond to Stephen, I mean, to me, you know, I think it's a perfectly acceptable response to this bylaw to say that it's not workable in a particular instance. To me, that's actually the bylaw doing what it's intended to do, which is, it's considered, and it can't work in this instance. You know, when it talks about exceptions, even the, so the most, so all you're doing is, the exception would be, we don't have to think about it, you know. So to me, you know, like even when you're included, you're never mandated to do any particular thing at any particular place. You know, so to me, like it's, you know, the mischief that's, you know, any potential for mischief is pretty low.
And I can't, I can't imagine us not going forward with this, at least to the town meeting, because.
If this is the character of the community, we've talked, we talk all the time about white biking and how peripatetic people are in Long Meadow, and, you know, the bike racks at the elementary and middle schools being completely full. It completely fits with the personality and character of the community, which is why I think it's, you know, it's part of it. It does get more expensive to do these things, but I think this is an investment the community would want to make in itself.
I think so too, Stephen. So anyway, we'll, I'll talk with you, and we'll get more input back. So Marie, okay?
Okay.
We didn't, did we have a motion? We didn't have a motion to accept it?
No.
This was just under discussion. Okay. And I've got it down. It'll be back before us. All right, let's see. Mark, I think we've got down to the point of town manager compensation, because we don't have, we didn't get the minutes in, did we? Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, so we, it looks like we have town manager compensation is the next item, and that's the only item left on our agenda tonight. I'm going, I'm going to go back and we're going to do something else on that.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, yeah.
I, we're going to talk about town manager compensation now, Richard?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to be recognized if I could.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a comment to make. On June of 2013, I filed with the town clerk's office a potential conflict of interest statement. And, and I did that also in 2010. At this point, because of something, and I do have to make a comment to my fellow select board members, that came up after our meeting last Friday, or two weeks ago Friday, on this, I've had a discussion with our town council. And after that discussion with our town council, it's been agreed to, and I've agreed to, that I will be recusing myself from this discussion. I'm going to do so in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations, so I will be excusing myself from, from the meeting during this discussion, and we'll be back in when it's completed.
Okay, we're, the only thing we're going to do, Mark, is just go ahead and come back and open meeting to adjourn.
Okay, well, I'll be back to open meeting.
Okay. Okay, so the, the item on the floor right now is town manager's compensation. I'd like to start with just a brief introduction of this item. I may miss something, and I may not. About, back when we first went out to hire our town manager, which ended up to be Stephen Crane, we had worked with the Nut Pine or Valley Planning Commission, who did we deal with?
Collins Center.
The Collins Center, to do a recruitment package. And we also had them come in and evaluate the job and help in the recruiting of it. And they also made recommendations on salary, on what they thought was going to be appropriate for a town of our size, and what the salary base should be for a town manager, since they were, they were aiding us in the recruitment package. Their recommendations at that time were salary range, I believe, was 125 to 135 for a town our size in this location in this day and age. As we started into the process of evaluating applications, I believe we went through three different tiers of applications. And for a variety of reasons, we were unable to make a selection. We made selections, but we were unable to come to a contract with the first two selectees. The one selective was absolutely money-bound. There was no doubt about it. We could not offer the amount of money that the individual needed to have to come to our town. The other one, I think there was some other factors in there. I don't think money ever got to be the issue, but there was one point that we made an offer to one of the, one of the applicants of $130,000. And the, we were unable to come to agreements on the contract. We then took the second one, and we, I think, broke off contract negotiations before we really even got to the money. And then we, we went down and we, we took the rest of the application pile, and we sat down and we looked at them. And I think we did have some help bringing, what, three, four, Marie, was it Mark and Paul?
And the interim town manager.
And the interim town manager brought three people back to us, and we interviewed them. We consequently, we hired Stephen Crane. Now, at that point, the, Stephen was a, not a, how do I put it? He was, he didn't, he didn't have a lot of experience as a town manager, been a town administrator, and done a very good job of where he was at. But the board felt that the qualifications for a town manager, he hadn't been tested yet. So the salary base was dropped back on this contract from the recommendation of 125 to 135 to $105,000. And Mr. Crane did accept that. There were some extenuating circumstances that aided him in this decision. And we don't have the contract documents in front of us, but it has been reported from Mr. Crane that there was communication that did take place at that point between the chair of the board and him, when he was hired, that he realized the salary base was lower than what was anticipated, and he said, after a year, we'll, we'll check into it. And many of you know, our first year with Mr. Crane did not go well. We had a lot of adjustment problems, which you can, you can associate, there will be adjustment problems. But getting to the end of the, end of the line, we're now two years later. And this year, we gave the evaluation, Mr. Crane, and we turned around and said, okay, it's time to, to look at the compensation package. And independently, I went back and I looked at what an average town manager back in 2013 was making for a similar sized town as equal to Long Meadow. This did not take into consideration any of the accomplishments that Stephen had done, such as the casino mitigation and some of these other factors. There was a lot of factors took place. Plus the fact we knew we were division chiefs, we're getting ready to roll out of here. So there was a lot of things going on behind the scenes. This strictly took, it was a static review of three or three to five towns. And the salary base, when I took 2013, I put a 3% escalator on for cost of living and adjustment steps and all, for two years, it brought it up to 225, or 225, 750. Now, I think to folks to further understand this, there's some other, other situations in this contract. During this period of time that we negotiated and made up a new contract, there were some fairly significant things that were reduced from our previous town manager's contract, such as sick leave. Robin Crosby was able to maintain 150 days of sick leave. When this contract went out, at the board's direction, that was dropped to 15 days for Mr. Crane. Professional development went from $2,500 with Ms. Crosby to Mr. Crane at $250. Define comp, she had $2,500, Mr. Crane had zero. There was no car allowance. Ms. Robin, Robin Crosby had a $200 car allowance. I believe she had a phone allowance. These were taken to zero on Mr. Crane's contract. So there was some fairly significant reductions in benefits, side benefits that we had had with our previous town manager and when Mr. Crane come on. with our previous town manager and when Mr. Crane come on. Now, this had nothing to do with Mr. Crane. This had to deal with the feelings of the board at that time, and how they felt about administrative benefits being given to a senior management professional. I can assure you, these items are going to be renegotiated when Mr. Crane, if the board keeps Mr. Crane at our town and makes a recommendation to do a contract renewal, and if Mr. Crane wants to stay with us, these issues are coming back on the table, and there will be some strong reinforcements made to bringing some of these benefits back that were at least enjoyed by our previous town manager. So, the end of the result is, we had, we had a meeting, and we talked about this. Mr. Crane was not present. We talked about the board members, and we made a recommendation that seemed to have approval at that board of a salary base of $125,000, being retroactive to July 1st of this year. And we made an agreement at that meeting that other items in the contract, such as the items I have just mentioned, would be under review and consideration if we renewed Mr. Crane's contract. In, I think, January, we have to give you the okay that we're going to review.
I think it's, the contract date, even though most things are triggered to the fiscal year, the contract anniversary date is actually April 1st or 2nd.
Okay. So, we'll make sure we hit that date, for sure, anyway. So, that's where we sit. This is our recommendations that we have brought forth in our meeting. That's what I'd like to share with you, chair, my feelings on how I came up with that dollar amount. I'll open up the table now to discussion.
Well, when you said that, I thought you said 225.
Yeah, you did, by accident.
Yeah. I saw Stephen's eyes light up.
No wonder Stephen never said a word.
In your own words, you may want to say that.
Okay, in my own words, it's a salary base of $125,000. That's 125, 000.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't want to change what you said. But, you know, as we went through this process together as a board, it was, I think it was a valuable process. We got to talk about a lot of things, about how Stephen's been the last few years, and strengths and weaknesses of any employee. And, you know, I look at, as a new member of the board, that, you know, there's really been an issue of trust going on. And so, for me, this salary increase is really, it's not about the amount of money. It's about the fact that we want to rebuild trust with our town manager, to recognize his accomplishments. You know, personally, whenever I've gone to a town meeting or watched one on television, when he steps in front of the microphone, I'm always very comfortable about what's going to come out of his mouth. And, you know, and that's an important quality. And so, I really would like him to stay with the town, and I'm hoping that this will convince him to stay with us. And so, I'm behind this 100%.
I support the increase in salary. And though I think Stephen's been doing a great job, I think we need to be within the range of what town managers are being paid for the work. So, someone has to be compensated for the work they do. And the range, the bottom of the range is really 125. It can go up to 135, 140, and the benefits that go along with that. So, I think it's important that Long Meadow respect the work that the town manager does, and that we pay what is the going rate for a town manager. I think we had an important conversation about specifically Stephen Crane's work as a town manager. As Tom said, the positives, where the weaknesses are, we need to work. And I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done with this board and learning to work with our town manager. And so, the next few months, I'm hoping will be very productive that way. We needed to start, and I think, a strong level playing field. And for that reason, I supported the salary of $125,000 for the town manager.
Actually, we, it's kind of a funny expression, but we've really asked for a reset on everyone to go back and start over. I think Marie made an interesting point in our introduction and in our actual meeting, was the fact that she wanted to remove the people from it and look at the town of Long Meadow, and said, what should the town of Long Meadow be paying the town manager, period? And that was the sole discussion. And I think that was, there was a beneficial approach to look at it that way. Now, in this, in this meeting also, that we, we have subsequently talked with Stephen. And there are some commitments on both sides of the fence, on improving relationships, basically communication, not performance. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to tell you, there's not one single thing that has ever been put on the table that I'm aware of that talked about the performance of our town manager, and the performance and the excellence performed in the duties, and the actual performance of duties. We seem, every bit of information that we seem to have of any static would be, boils down to basically personalities and the interpretation of what's too much and what's not enough communication. And that seems to be where most of the areas of any friction are setting. And Mr. Crane has tipped his hat and said, yes, he will make an honest effort to show the board that he can reset the clock also. And we have a consultant coming in that's going to talk with us as a board, for the relationship that we should have by our charter with a town manager. Because we have to remember, 10 years ago, we had a three-member board and a town administrator. And at that time, they actually, bornless, ran the town. Now, we have a strong town manager and a board that is intended to provide executive leadership. So, there's a, I guess, a reidentification of those roles and functions. I think it's going to be beneficial for not only Mr. Crane and for our board also. So, that's the discussions that took place. This is not a one-sided affair. This is a, kind of a timeout period to see how we're going to adjust. And we actually decided to step forward and show our good faith in this relationship. And I think we've done the right thing. So, I'm going to place a motion on the table that we adjust the town manager.
Could I address?
Sure.
Or if you want to make your motion, then I'll...
Yeah, that's okay. Go ahead.
No, that's all right. So, I'm not going to be voting for this. I don't think a raise of that size, of going from 109 to 125,000, is reflective of the performance reviews that we've had the last two years. I think something more modest is appropriate, especially since we're in a year where a lot of our unions are getting 0% increases. So, I can't support it. I don't want to restate things that I've said before. I do think that, you know, we can definitely work on improving in the future, but I don't think it's appropriate under the circumstances.
Okay. Alex, thank you. I'm not, not the point of debating. The only thing, I'd say that there was one thing that Mr. Grant mentioned, when we go to our union workforces. The union workforces have pretty well guaranteed salary bases when they hire in and everything's pretty well arranged. And I think one should remember that we actually moved off the mark quite a bit from what we originally said this position was going to be paid in our community. And I think that's the, one of the main things that I feel is important for us to correct. Because regardless of the relationship that we have in the future with our town manager, we also have to stand here as a community and be watched by other communities on how we treat our senior employees and how we establish the pay structure. That as much ruled my decision to go for this as anything, it's just, how are we setting? And I think our original stance at 105 was inappropriate. I think, and even if we made that, I think there should have been some guaranteed things put in there, and they were not. So, anyway, I'd like to present a motion that we adjust the base salary of our town manager from 109, 2, to $125,000 to be retroactive to July 1st.
Second.
Discussion.
Richard, Kevin coming?
No, no, wait.
Yeah.
You're not getting that 225. No. Any other discussion? Okay. I'll see in the discussion, I'll take a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, and we have one debate. Now you may speak.
I just wanted to even, well, now I want to say thank you for the adjustment in salary. But before, I wanted to say, I appreciate everyone's comments. I think I've, you know, I appreciate the positive comments as much as anybody, but I think I've shown that I'm willing to listen to and internalize some of the things, some of my deficiencies and areas where improvements made. I do feel like a lot has been accomplished, and I feel like I, my salary has never driven my approach, and I don't see that happening now. Even though I, you know, whether the wage was fair or market rate or not, I still approached my job with the same level of commitment and passion that I approach every job I've ever had, and I will continue to do that. And I'm very grateful for the acknowledgement of that work. And, you know, want to say, and say thank you for the support, and agree that this is really a good sign, a good building block for the board-town manager relationship going forward. And I think this, this step along with the facilitated discussion we're going to have will hopefully show the community that all of us can, you know, take the message that we've heard from the community and grow. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Yes?
So, the vote was 3 to 1 to 1 with Mr. Grant against Mr. Gold abstaining.
He didn't, well, I guess, I know it's officially intention. He just, in the minutes, just reflected he recused himself.
He recused himself.
So...
It would be if he was absent from the meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Can somebody get Mr. Gold?
Yeah.
Hey, Mark.
Richard?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need anything? That's why Jim's here.
No.
Are you just going to give that to Jim?
So, you've got to give these to him.
Yeah, but I don't think they know that. Should we just hand that to him?
Um, we can. Okay. We've got this, we had a memorandum that came in from the Barry Jarvis to Stephen Crane, and Stephen Crane passed on to the select board, talking about the renaming of a tennis facility. And what I've got to do is, I've got to give this back to our town manager, because it requires, by the naming policy, to have signatures of 50 registered voters. As the policy, that was approved on 12/1/2014. And we don't have the signatures on them. And this did come in from individuals. These were not, this was not an elected official. Is my correct reading on that, Stephen?
Sorry, Stephen, I was trying to read at the same time.
Oh, then it looks like we have to have signatures of 50 registered voters.
If it's generated from the public.
Yeah, and it was generated from the public.
I guess the only exception is school committee?
Yeah, it's not school committee.
It's not the school committee.
Yeah. And that's only really like the auditorium and things like that. The school buildings are named by the select board as well.
So, can you route this back to the ones that came through?
Sure.
And see if we can get the 50 signatures?
I just want to make sure that... Okay, no, that's fine.
At this point, there's no, there's no reason whatsoever for the board to have a discussion on the merits of this without having the...
The only thing I was going to ask, Mark, is that correct, is this the correct draft? Because you're really, you're noted so good. And the only change was the super.
Yeah, super joy.
Yeah, I want to go back and look at it, because we had a discussion about eligibility, and I think we determined that the 50 signatures is the threshold for eligibility.
Right. Of registered voters.
And nothing, because we had had a discussion about, you know, if you're a town employee or something like that. But no, only the 50 signatures is the barrier.
That's what I recall.
And then we'll bring it back, and we'll have board discussion on the issue. Okay? Okay, I'll tell you what. We've set a record tonight, folks. We got through the entire agenda. And we have no subcommittee, oh, wait a minute, we did bring back subcommittee reports. Do you have anything, Alex? You and Marie have anything?
No.
Oh, no, we're, he's working on this complete streets. We'll have piles of things.
Okay, well, there's a term here that we often don't see this early in the evening that's called adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a second.
At 9:04 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, and all in favor, aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you watching us tonight, and we will see you in two weeks from now. Have a nice evening.
All right.
Bye.